Athletic allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What finish your desire with the consent of the governor? I will look Google.
Second?
All in favor? It looks like the next upcoming municipal meeting is Thursday, March 9 at 5:30. Here. Do we have any select board comments, announcements? We'll start with you this time, Simone.
I have nothing to say, yet.
Suzanne, tell.
Boy, this is gonna be a good meeting. Moving on. Business item number one. Annual budget town meeting planning. The select board will decide whether to hold a referendum town meeting or a traditional open town meeting. The decision will allow administration to begin planning, will also inform the budget advisory committee's schedule. Town meeting option pros and cons were provided by the town court for consideration. Any discussion?
I know that we've got some statistics as to how people participated the past three years, but the past three years are far from normal. I don't know if that's a way to validate.
I don't think it is, because to be honest with you, I think those figures have been pretty well played out the last 20 years. So I think it is what you've seen the last three years is kind of status quo.
All the same, I would prefer that we stay with the town meeting, the traditional town meeting, until such time as we have definitive indication from the voters that that's what is wanted. Since we ended up having a split on the straw vote, 50% to 50% precisely, I don't think we have, I don't think we have a clear indication of how people would vote had they the opportunity to do so.
So what would be the best way to move forward to try to, should we have some kind of vote at the town meeting? Should we have?
I mean, I'm also in favor of the traditional meeting, but I'm, we could simply ask, would for people just hand in a slip, how would you like to do this in the future?
I'd rather have a slip than show of hands, because I think that deters some people from being.
I think we should use as a voluntary, let them decide privately on what their conclusion is and vote thereafter.
So we have town meetings, that's a good place for.
Yes.
Well, the only caveat there is that the people who attend open town meetings are the ones who want open town meetings.
Right.
And we might not get a true depiction.
But we could also offer a sealed ballot at the town hall, a sealed box at the town hall to incorporate. I mean, that anyone can.
I just, I don't want to leave anybody out who might have an opinion.
When we have a vote, is it something, is it something that could be placed on the front counter upstairs for a certain period of time and catch a lot of people that come in to do business here in town?
But then it just has to determine one vote per person. I don't know how you would regulate that.
Yesterday.
I think you'd still miss some people that way.
You're gonna miss them, no matter what you do.
When's the next election, for say?
November.
So in November, have a ballot that more people will vote on.
The thing is, what I want to make sure is going forward, half of the November, how do we record it to make sure?
You also have absentee voting in November. So you have, it's the same.
They'll all be coming with a clerk?
Yeah, you can include a straw ballot in with the absentee ballots.
I think that's probably the most seamless way to handle it, instead of trying to deal with it at town meeting time.
Yeah.
You know, in May.
I move that we keep the traditional open town meeting until we have the opportunity to have a straw ballot at future times.
I would have with a definitive, I want a definitive, with a definitive preference shown by the voters.
Not only that, at a definitive time, because if we get ourselves in warm hot water by two years sitting here talking about the same thing. So will it be up until November?
Yes.
So Almond, I move that we have, we follow the traditional town meeting with a straw ballot at the upcoming November election to provide absentee ballot as well as in-person ballot to see their preference.
And just as a, oh, second, just to add, I thought that the straw ballot was worded very well and very clearly, the way that we did that. So I think the same, similar wording would be very, very good. And maybe some publicity at the, at the town meeting as the open town meeting is something to think about, kind of announcement, that this has the possibility of changing for the good or for the worse, depending on our positions.
Shall we take a vote? All in favor of having the next town meeting as a regular one and having a vote in November to see if the town wants to change it? All in favor?
Yeah.
Now, the conversations with Carly and Julie, we would like to shoot for a May 16th town meeting. Does that interfere with anybody's schedule?
Hold on, I travel late, I think, for a week after that. Yeah, yeah, I'm traveling May 21st.
Wasn't traditionally it always in June?
June is difficult for the treasurer, because it's very close to end of year.
Yeah.
We like to get it done in May, if at all possible, because it's just easier for administration.
Because it's too close to the end of year, fiscal year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is the revote due by now?
The revote will probably be done in July, I think.
And I have seen a few people advertising other towns are May.
May's family is sweet spots.
A May 16th?
Yeah.
Will that mandate any transient residents coming back? I mean, have you seen any influence of, you know, folks coming back up from the South? Okay.
It'll be posted on the website.
But typically, we don't really.
I don't think they know. Right, the transient residents are typically not registered voters, so they're not really eligible to participate.
Well, I know my parents used to come back May 20th, because they couldn't be out of state one, six, or whatever.
Six months of the day.
Yeah.
To be fair, I'll start advertising the same date.
And you'd be tracking that probably?
It's on the honor system.
Yeah. Business item number two. The select board approved purchase of a cap monitor at the July 28 meeting. Fire chief explained at that time that the equipment is necessary to maintain the department's current licensing level. The cost of the monitor is approximately $29,772. The town administrator recognized that the purchase he funded through the fire department capital has a current balance of approximately $55,600. Any discussion? I think it's a good place for it to come from. Wasn't there some talk about? Or maybe you're mixing this up. I think I'm mixing this up, so I'll withdraw that.
I think it would have negatively affected our rating.
No, no, we're talking about paying for something by selling something.
That was the airbrush. Maybe that for a training swap or something.
Yeah, so you weren't remembering wrong.
A lot of.
Still a lot of.
David's wearing off all day.
For you, soon you'll be putting funds out there.
Yeah, we had talked about that from capital improvement.
From their, from their capital improvement?
Yes. Yes, and we had talked about that one. It's full of minutes.
So the, the, I remember it just showing up now.
Is the fire chief recommending this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's going to be kept where?
At the seizure.
Yeah, that would be their equipment. Okay. I move that we pay the cost of the monitor, $29,772, through the fire department capital fund. Any more second that?
Any further discussion from anyone? All in favor? Business item number three. The select board will review the job description for the position of town administrator and discuss expectations for that position that may not be outlawed in the current description. The highlights provided by ECP body at the July 16, 2020, select board workshops are included to find, to provide information about the administrator select board relationship. An excerpt from Maine Municipal Association Municipal Officers Manual and the main statute explains the duties of a town manager are included to inform an amended job description for the town manager.
Administrator, administrative. I actually have a buzzer every time you say administrative.
It's because it's.
Yeah. I'd like to actually move the tables for a future meeting, to have sufficient time to review it. I didn't see this until the minute the information was sent out last night, yesterday. And I think I'd like to look into it more and certainly let our, the rest of the residents do that as well, if they'd like to participate.
It's actually not for the residents to participate.
It's our job.
It's the select board's job to determine what the duties of the town administrator are. Kathy suggested I put it on this week's agenda. You don't, I'm not saying we have to deal with it now, but the reason why it's coming up now is because with Ron's departure, at least three of our job descriptions are going to need to be amended before he leaves. So there is a sense of urgency to it.
So if you'd like to see us sooner than late, you'd either have a workshop on the select board and Christine can come up with a job description. I don't feel like we can move on any of the other committees, job descriptions, any of that stuff without having her job description set. I think it's kind of putting, I think that's why we're in limbo all over the place. Road committee, planning board. We can't come up with their job descriptions if we don't know how Christine relates or interacts with those boards and committees and the select board's responsibilities. We're all over the place. So I'd like to start at the top, work our way down the bottom.
Yeah, I think there's really a lack of clarity about the position and certainly about expectations for the position. And I just want to say, this isn't anything about a job evaluation at this point. This is about any town administrator that happens to be sitting with his chair. The job really needs to be defined.
From the very general description that we gave you five years ago. Is that long?
Longer. October 22nd, 2018.
Yeah. Oh, wow. And the, and the job evolves as well. So is there any possibility we could do a workshop-y kind of meeting next week? Because I'm away the following.
The budget committee is meeting at 7 o'clock next Thursday, so that would be fine with me. It would be, I wouldn't have to sit here alone for.
Do you feel that you're just gonna sit here alone next week?
No, the 2nd of March is the next week, I think. That's the Friday, long one.
For the budget meeting or the council?
For the county budget.
Is it all day March 3rd?
Yeah, clear.
And what day are you trying to meet next week?
Next Thursday. 23rd.
What time is that?
7:00.
It's got plenty of time before. Oh, we're not meeting until?
The budget committee is meeting at 7:00.
Is that our, yay, May 20, until 23rd is okay with me?
Yeah.
I agree.
Double 20?
5:30.
I'll be here anyway.
I can be here at 5:00, I think.
I'd really love, can you be here at 5:00?
Sure.
Thank you. I just would really like to do, I'd really like to come up with a preliminary job description that night and then have Christine review it and frame out the details.
We can act on it on that, but that would be.
I think that would be great.
So there's a motion on the floor to table, should we?
Yes, we still need to. Do you want to refine your motion, Suzanne?
I move that we table the town administrator job description until our workshop on the 23rd at 5:00 p.m.
Any more discussion? Yes?
I just had a comment of what Christine said, how tax assessor, I mean, Ron is leaving, is going to influence three jobs. Are you, is it my understanding you're gonna integrate his duties into, separate his duties? Is that why the, why the job description changed, or?
That's, that's certainly part of it. That's the urgency for having to get it done by May.
Yeah.
But I feel there's been a real lack of clarity about the job description and expectations for the position. At times, it feels like there's an expectation that I should be, or the town administrator should be fulfilling the duties of a town manager. And at other times, it feels like the select board wants more oversight. So depending on how they come out, you know, their decision-making about what they want the town administrator to do, it could run the spectrum from having them, they might need to meet every week in order to make decisions in the time of honor, or they give the town administrator more authority and more autonomy. So it's really, that's the goal, is to figure out what they would like to see for that decision.
So is the town not gonna replace Roni?
No, we're not. We're contracting out some of what he does. Many of his job duties can be absorbed by Carly, Julie, and myself. You know, like straight transfers of property, overseeing the personal property declarations. There are certain things that we can do that we won't need to contract out, and that will keep the cost down with the contractor.
All right, thank you for that explanation.
Yeah. So all in favor of tabling business item number three and having a workshop on the 23rd?
With the understanding that we would have the document ready for the 9th, if at all possible.
So I would say and strongly suggest that we all do some research and really look through this and come to the meeting with our thoughts, ideas, suggestions, and really be ready to work on this and not have, let's not come in blind. Make sense?
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could we have, do we need to finish that vote? Could you email copies of what we charged you with in 2018? It's very general, so that you can compare.
As a chain?
The only thing I can provide, other than the job description, would be the ad for the job.
Yeah, yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Just the general thing of what, of a job we asked you to do in the first place, compared to how much more specific this is.
So we need a vote, all in favor? Yes, you.
Will a copy of that be available to the public to want to look at before it goes to the 9th? What do you recommend?
It's all on the website, the packet's on the website.
I mean, once you meet on the 23rd?
Oh, the revised.
The revised.
I don't see why not.
I guess we could do that.
I actually, do you think we can get wherever we're posting on the website done sooner? So that anyone who wants to participate and they see it, because I didn't see this till yesterday.
Yeah, sometimes yes, sometimes no, it depends what we're doing in the office. The municipal workflow is sometimes such that it's difficult to do that. Depending if people are out or whatever might be happening.
Because I think, I'd like to get the opportunity to share with the community, so if there's something near their heart that they would then have the opportunity to attend a meeting. Is it what?
How much can I? Be the agenda.
Yeah, like, you know, like the Friday before. Not, not gigantic like before, but like if we, if we're gonna have a meeting on a Thursday, the Friday before would provide time.
I think the only trouble with that is when things come up that need to be addressed at the next meeting and it's already Monday.
Yeah, I mean, in this particular case, Carly's out tomorrow, my day's a holiday.
Well, but yesterday was, is Wednesday, is still, it's only the day before. If we can somehow, you know, shoot for the Friday before, and if something, certainly, not everything's gonna be cut and drawn by a date, but if we publish the basic agenda the Friday before with the opportunity to update, if something's important, we can do that.
Sometimes that can work, but this agenda wasn't determined until I spoke with Kathy Monday night.
I'm saying generally, I mean, if we, it's, I just say I'd like to see it being put out.
We always wait till we do as much time as possible.
Any more discussion on this article? Town administrators report.
I don't have any future agenda items.
We, I think we all received a letter from a retired teacher, a concerned retired teacher. I don't know what's the best way to address that.
I didn't receive it.
You didn't receive it?
No.
I think it's important that we get.
I think we need to.
Christine, a copy, I just assumed, sorry, my bad, that you were on it too, so I think before we can discuss it.
Julie, Angela's circumstances, do you think I can receive a letter? She did leave that.
I will see if I can drop mine off tomorrow morning, a copy of it. I'd like to maybe add that to the agenda.
And I would.
It might even require a executive session, so I have to be careful.
That would be.
I will check on that.
Because we have no authority over the school board, except for making sure that the money is spent appropriately.
Right, and I don't think we can talk in public about.
Absolutely.
The personnel issue.
Absolutely not.
So, well, then we should invite the individual to the executive session.
It's not our job.
Without our ability to do that.
If we don't oversee the school and the personnel, it's really, it's tricky. So I think if you get the, the letter.
I'll review the letter and I'll reach out to whoever I need to.
Yeah, you might need to talk to Sally, because it's complicated.
It is complicated, and it's, we need to make sure that.
We handle it right.
Well, the town will handle it right collectively, wherever that falls.
Because it could be.
It should be a consequence. School business is the business of the town and the school board of directors and not us. We have no authority.
Legal concerns are a town concern.
Where, because it's a person holding both of those top positions, so it puts us in a.
It's not a recourse for the people, the board, the school board needs to do.
Oh, that's, that's true. I wonder if they get.
They did.
They get a copy of that.
It was a school, well, it was also a school board.
It's sent to you, you lead us in directions.
There's a monitoring, since the treasurer is involved, it might involve you.
So I will.
Okay.
Figure that out.
Any other future agenda items?
Not necessarily a future agenda item, but I did want to put it on the select board's radar that next Tuesday. The planning board will be having a workshop to discuss the infamous LD 2003, which is going to amend housing.
The housing.
As we know it. So Max Johnstone, as you all know from MCOT, will be here at 6 o'clock with the board, so.
Is that open to the public?
It is, and it'll be recorded if you don't make it. And if anyone can't make it and you have some questions.
It's a workshop, correct?
Yeah, it's a workshop.
I see you put this in our packet, is this something that you wanted us to discuss tonight or just?
No, not necessarily, it's just misleading as correspondence, so you should be aware.
Okay. Any other future agenda items?
Wow, that's a short one.
Any public comment?
I was just curious if any further resolutions been accomplished on Mount LeRouge with that lady with the, with the massive erosion that came down the cross? I only ask this because Noah's already talking about the spring flooding.
Yeah, and I think I was informed that there was a good discussion between the homeowner and the road commissioner. Goodly, I guess, I don't, and that they have a plan in place, so I guess we'll wait and let them share that with us.
Could they at least share, well, because maybe give us a reference to where it says, because they came to the meeting.
That's great, Suzanne, and I understand that, but what has happened, and Nick is out of commission right now. So he shared that with Mr. Hill, so we can get something in writing soon, I'm sure, but.
Until, until the agreement is signed, he hasn't delivered, it's not something that I feel that we need to know. Things are in the process, and conversations are taking place, that should be enough.
I know they're doing a lot of work, and the last thing I heard from Mr. Hill was the homeowner was happier.
Well, just, I just wanted to, because they came through, they were at an official meeting, I just want to make sure that we.
Yeah.
So that had a lasting.
Continue with it. That's good.
Especially in the spring, when we're not having this hot call.
I think we're gonna.
Well, we are. It starts tomorrow.
Yeah, they're already talking about it with predictions and stuff, and it's, we're in a bad wet pattern. It's not unfortunately settling the drought in the groundwater, it's all runoff at this point. So it's just gonna get worse until it completely floods.
And I just, I don't know if this is appropriate, I just want to throw it out there. We have to trust in the people that will ask to serve, whether it's road committee, town administrator, budget committee, that they're doing the best they can, and sometimes we jump too fast. So let's trust them, let's work with them, let's try to, we need the trust as a town again, and that has gone away. The only way we can get that trust is be supportive of one another and not always call everybody on. I've seen some great improvements, I don't want to see it slip the other way again. So I just say, let's trust in the process. I'm not saying if something, you hear something strongly wrong, go to, to bring it to us.
No, I, I think it's good that, you know, the follow-up has been made, the communication, the lines of communication are there, and the homeowner is happier, you know. We never achieve 100% resolution, but at least the communication is.
But I think we went 260 degrees from where we were, which is always good. Any other public comment?
You have one? You're first? Sure, yeah, I have one, and it has to do with.
Okay, can we just give your name?
Communication, my name is Brian. So I.
Sorry, can we get your last name on the record?
Sure, Brian, it does. So I sent an email to Christine, and I believe my partner forwarded the email to the three of you, and it has to do with the situation on Seacase, and the building there seems to have violated the building permit in a number of ways. Were you guys able to read that and see that?
I didn't really go into depth, it was, that's, we should talk to Jonathan about that.
I already know the situation.
Okay, do you, can I share a moment, or?
Well, there's a lot to this situation. Brian has been in contact a number of times, asking for follow-up about this particular situation. In Jonathan's conversation with the town attorney, the town attorney has advised him that he's offered enough information. that he's offered enough information and that he should no longer interact or respond to the questions, because her opinion is that the questions are always the same and that we've done our best to answer them. Jonathan continues to follow up with John Stadler, and he's doing everything he can to make sure that the situation is, that everything is in compliance. So there's really not much that we can say at this point, unless this board would like us to respond in a different way than what the town attorney suggested.
I feel we ought to follow the town attorney's advice. If as much information has been given and John is following up on the situation, I'm not sure if there's anything else that we can do.
Yeah, he's followed up on the way that the the property is being marketed. He's asked Mr. Stadler to change the advertisement for the property. He's taking steps to make sure that everything is in compliance with our current ordinance. There's really not much more that John can do.
So the next step would be for the person who has the issues to consult their own legal?
If it is to get to that level, I suppose that, you know, that would be.
Because if all our attorney's advice is nothing we can do to assist.
Well, nothing more, because her her opinion is that John has made every attempt to answer questions along the way.
So I've not heard from John in years, I've never heard from John in years. Are you aware of any effort John has made to communicate with me?
He, I believe he has.
No, he has not, he has, John has not communicated with me in years. The only time I've communicated with John in, I would say, the last three years is in this room. The last time we talked about Sea Kiss. You guys might recall that one, that was when Sea Kiss had illegally clear-cut an old growth forest. That involved me asking John questions for years about the fact that there was something obviously illegal going on over there. John not doing anything about it.
That's not correct, I wanna I wanna make sure.
Maybe just let me finish.
Well, I'm not gonna allow you to say that somebody did not follow up on it when they clearly did.
So I'll just remind you of the situation. For years, we asked John to look into the fact that they were clearly cutting close to the line. Nothing was done. Eventually, I had to get the state involved, state D U P, they came down and walked, they identified the problem. I don't know if you remember, but you had the big meeting where they wouldn't do the replanting, they wouldn't come up with a plan. You had to find out. Remember that whole?
But the whole standing's been done, and they they put a road sign in place and so that did happen.
That's the last time I've ever communicated with John. So since that time, that he's talked to me, that I haven't heard a word from him since then. Since that time, we have let him know several times that they seem to be building a monstrosity over there. It looks like a massive building, it doesn't seem like what was approved by the planning board for that area. Could he look into it? I don't hear back from him. Now the thing is done, they've advertised it. If you would be willing to read the email that I sent you, I have a copy of it right here, I can read it to you if you want. It's permitted for two floors, built three floors. It's permitted for three rooms, built 10 rooms. It's supposed to be a one-family residence. He's got it set up for three families in there, three families. They're one, they're advertising it as like a temporary hotel, Airbnb, with three different families in and out, in and out, in and out. It was approved for something like 2,000 square feet, built 4,000 square feet. It said no porch, built porch, said no garage. It's promising online to build a garage, just laid the foundation for the garage. We have begged John to just go over there and look into it. You know, madam, we've had conversations with you about this property over the years, right?
Not recently.
Yeah, but over the years, and they've been building this thing for years. I mean, I don't know if you guys remember, but the last time we talked about them here, this woman stood up in the back talking about how this non-stop nonsense was ruining her life as she wept. Do you remember her crying back there? She's gone, she's gone, she begged you guys to help her, she's been driven out of town. And their house is vacant, there's a vacant house, because nobody can live near this. That's on one side of the property. On the other side of the property, there's like a little house there. That little house is called like Long Look or something like that. If you have a conversation with the owners of that house, a nice couple, they immediately start to weep. They don't go to that house, that is a vacant house as well. Literally, this guy is being allowed to destroy the area, destroy the quality of life. He's driven away two families, they have begged you for help. I'm begging you for help. Can we just please proactively enforce the code and the laws of this town and stop letting this guy, who is a scofflaw, you've been in here having to deal with this crap, stop letting him just run rampant over things and ruin everyone's quality of life? We're really begging you. And it's just so disturbing to me to hear this thing like, the lawyer says let's lawyer up, and the only way we'll ever communicate with someone who just asks you guys to help us when we let you know someone's breaking the law here to enforce the law, that you're like, well, no, unless they sue us, we can't ever talk to them. I don't wanna get into that stuff. I was so impressed when it came to the tree thing. Even though I was not impressed with John, I was impressed with the three of you. You guys really took it seriously, you were annoyed that this guy was abusing the community, and you said, let's hold him responsible. And I I thought that was great, I told you at the time, I really did. And I just would love for you to do that again. And and this idea of like, you won't even talk to us about this unless we sue you, like that is, that seems nuts to me. We don't wanna sue people, we don't wanna get into that madness, we're just begging you to enforce the law.
I don't think we're saying that, you know what, you just sue us.
I mean, you said that unless I had an attorney, I can't do it.
It's somehow impeding if they've broken a law.
Yeah.
If.
Well, we need, so we can't, there's nothing that we can, so for starters, this is the first time we're officially discussing this element as a board. You know, I don't think we can make a decision one way or the other without doing our research. Certainly, you know, a conversation with John would not be hurtful for us to hear what's discussed, to understand what is, I can't comment because I don't know. Pulling the plans, looking at, I mean, there's.
I will tell you this, I sent you a copy of the permit, so you have it. I also have it right here if you're interested to see.
No, no, no.
Anna sent you a copy of their advertising, which has 50 high-quality photos and a full description. And then I did for you a comparison, point by point by point. I have it right here, and I'm so happy to share with you guys, and we can talk about it. I just would love for the town to to look into this, to try to get John to do his job, and to try to stop the madness over there. I mean, it started, you know, he submitted an inaccurate plan to the planning board, an inaccurate plan. The entire approval of his plan should be rescinded and he should have to start over. He then illegally cleared an old growth forest, lied about it, used his fake plan to lie about it.
Was an old growth.
That wasn't an old growth forest over there?
It's been cut.
Oh, has? I apologize, no, no, it was a forest.
All of that, all of that land has been farmed.
Okay, I wasn't here for that.
No.
But we agree it was illegally cleared, I think, right?
And that was handled.
It was handled, I know, and that's good.
Government takes a long time, and we have to follow, we have to follow the laws. And I appreciate that you are upset. But there is nothing that we can do at this point. A, it was not on the agenda, and B, we don't have the information that we need from John.
And probably the planning board.
And from the planning board, and many other people who are involved with this. So I understand that you're upset, but at this point, there is nothing much that we can do.
So let let us let us gather some data, we can't, we can't comment one way, we're not gonna, I'm not gonna comment one way or the other. We need to do some research on our end and and look at what was, what was presented to the planning board, what the permits were for, there's, we just need to do some internal research on all of our documentation as well before we even venture a comment. To really get into a detailed discussion, let us do our our due diligence, get on the agenda, give us some time to do some work, and then get on the official agenda and discuss it, that's the best way to accommodate that.
Okay, so could you let me know, like, literally, we're just trying to be helpful. That's why I go to the town, I personally have gone through the plans, taken the photos. I personally got in contact with the state D U P to get things going on. I personally went and looked at the building permit and did the point-by-point comparison, literally just to try to make it easy for you guys. I'm trying to make John's job easy by pointing out to him the violation that's going on. I'm trying to make it easy. I'm like, I have a job, I'm doing all this research in my spare time. You know, it's, in the meantime, like, you know, as the years pass, do you remember the woman crying in here? Years, they tortured her for more years, and she had to just run out of town. Like, that's, lives are being lived while this guy is destroying the area. Whole lives are being lived, all right? And and so I understand government takes time. All I try to do is like encourage us proactively. I'll just give you a few examples. Years ago, I told John they're building something bigger than they're permitted to over there, so I tried to get government to get going on.
I'm gonna stop you because you weren't on the agenda for tonight, I don't wanna talk about John.
This is quite a comment, I thought.
Right.
Yeah?
But we're not gonna get any, we need to do our research, and we're more than willing to do that, and we understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Let us do some research, let us have some information. We can't even discuss this with you because we're not quite sure.
Okay, but like, what can I do to to get you guys the information you need and to create the forum to do with this, because I tried everything, I tried everything. And and and, you know, I was told a month ago that the code enforcement office in this town will look into it, I have that email. Haven't heard a thing in a month, you clearly haven't heard a thing about it. So I just, I just, I don't know how the town works, I just need to know, we need help. You guys seem like you care and you could be helpful, that's what happened last time, it took years for it to get on your agenda.
You sent us that stuff, right?
It's my, Rebecca Goldfine sent you guys all that information, all 54 of those, the permit, everything.
Right.
Actually, you have it too, I sent it all to you last week, and if you want me to forward it to you right now? You don't, you didn't get that email I sent last week?
No, I didn't get that. But I've noticed recently that something is a little wonky with my email, so if you would send it again, I would really appreciate it.
I will send it again, I sent it to you and John a week ago.
Okay.
So the next meeting is March 11?
No, I, we need more time now. And we we cannot discuss John's performance, that's a personnel issue.
I'm not asking you guys to fire John, I'm telling you, I would like.
You're making, you're making charges that he is not fulfilling his responsibilities.
I can stand this broken law, that's my charge. And and you, he's done it before, and he appears to be doing it still, that's my charge, that's my charge.
Let us do some research.
Okay, I'm begging you to do it. She wept, and she's gone.
I get it, let us do some research.
And we have weeping at our place, and and you should meet this poor couple who won't even come to West Bath anymore because it's just ruining their lives.
Let us do our research.
Okay, I just, we're begging you guys.
Right, and we're also trying to, it may seem abrupt, but we're really trying to follow some policies and procedures that are put in place for us, such as not discussing things that aren't on the agenda. So it's, we're doing a lot of things here, and we hear you, we're doing research.
I'm begging you to put it on the agenda then, I didn't know that. Yeah, it's it just, it would be great, because it's clear to us that he wants to build, basically, he, you know, he got permission to build four single-family homes, he wants to build four multiple-family apartment buildings over there, and he's already built one.
So let, do you have an estimate on how much time do you think we'll need? So we can, we can give him a guideline when he should try and get on the agenda.
Is the building still going on in town?
I mean, the noise is forever and ever.
But it's permanent.
A clear, they're preparing to illegally build a garage.
I don't think there have been any new permits.
Okay.
It's not like there's new permits.
Okay, but if, well, if he's taking a garage, or he's building a garage and there's not a permit, we need, so we need to.
I understand that, I understand that, John's been down there, so he knows, there's no one with permits at this point.
I don't do it.
So do you think, is it March 20, when's the meeting?
Well, we did change the meeting to March 23rd.
Right, we did.
But our treasurer's out of the office that week, so I didn't know if we were going to talk about.
We can't, unless we move it to the 30th.
Is that something that you guys need to do based on productivity and and people you have available? I think it makes sense.
Yes.
I should, because she's trying to use vacation time.
Yeah.
So so she's, so she's out that week, so then we should officially move the 9th, uh, the 23rd or the 30th?
Around the middle of the 30th?
Yeah, no, that would be fine with me.
Yes, I can back on the 28th, yeah.
Do you want to vote on that, or can we just do it?
Just do it. So now, so my question is, should we let this gentleman know that, is the 30th enough time for us to?
We can't, I don't think we can make that commitment.
I don't either, there's just way too much going on with, and I'm, I hear you. It's just we're in the middle of budget season and for both county and.
So check in the week before the 30th and see.
I'll watch the agenda for sure.
No.
Can I?
We're gonna have to communicate with you to be, we need, so that's, that's why, we can't commit to it until we know we've collected what we need.
Sure, can I ask you something about that? So, can, like, you 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 have my email and Rebecca's email, and so any any information you wanna give us, please feel free to email us. But also, if you are looking into this, I have looked into this, and I I will never lie to you, unlike John Stadler. I will just show you photos of the actual plans that are here in the thing, I will show you photos of the of the actual permit. So if you just let me know.
I know, but we need to talk to John, we need to talk to the planning board.
Right, but if you're, if you have questions about.
Could you drop a complete set of hard copy information off that you have at the town hall?
So I have, I mean.
All of this documents, documents.
Your documents.
So I can put that together. I'm just gonna help expedite.
Yeah.
What, he's done some analysis, what, I mean, if you can share, so that if we turn around and look at and then verify what we see against what you're.
I'll absolutely do it, I'll absolutely do it.
I'm just like to point out that for something that wasn't on the agenda, we've taken almost 20 minutes. If the, I would like to move on to the next item on the on the agenda, which is the chairman.
Yeah, I I'm just concerned that there's other people who are as concerned as Brian, and they're not here because they're not aware that we're talking about this.
Oh, they're out, they're out, they left town.
No, no, we're talking, somebody else may have had something that's going in their part of town, and they know because they're not on the agenda, they're not gonna be able to talk about it, so.
Well, I hope I haven't wasted your time. I wanna let you know, like, it, we're, it's day after day, hour after hour, year after year we live with it, and so so we hope that a little bit of time at a meeting to let you know again how painful it is to live next to this stuff is 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 not, is not abusing the patience.
David, do you have anything on for public comment?
No, we have started the coming by the process, and we don't have numbers yet as how it's gonna affect the town. Our big concern was they'd put bids out for four new communications towers for the county, and they expected it to be $3 million. It came at $5,300,000.
Ouch.
Oops. And that was two bids, and the other bid was, I said, $9,000, sorry.
$9,000.
$9,000. So it's gonna be a lot up in the air, but we won't know too much until the 3rd of March, as far as the county budget goes.
And I think they're asking for three new positions.
Yes.
What positions might those take?
One's another person for the DA office. One's another deputy sheriff, and I forgot the third one. And second one for the E M A maybe?
Yeah. And it's a lot to do with capital improvement, things that have to be done, that haven't been done, and there's not gonna be any more kicking the can down the road, so I think this budget is gonna.
The building is a lot of brickwork. An estimate of $0.5 million.
Wow.
Of course.
Everything is in the millions now.
Yeah, I thought we donated land, half of this, $9,000 for towers.
That's a whole different, it's not on the agenda yet, different process. So, yeah...
To be continued.
Yeah, March third is our all-day budget review on that cross section, so...
Friday is...
Struggling, so...
Friday.
They gonna need to lunch?
They are on the third floor.
I hope it's not very expensive, and eat like...
It can't be a billion dollars?
No, no, no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
A little jerky.
Second, on favor. Thank you for trying to keep us in some kind of order, appreciate it.